We'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, October 11, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for the cooperation. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
All right, at this time, we will stand for the invocation which will be offered by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance which will be provided by Lynn Gurekthe, Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please stand.
Oh gracious God, please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions for the issues that have come for us. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. We ask for your protection and blessings for our military men and women and may they always return safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, address the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Due to legal requirements for the redistricting process, we will consider public hearing item number 11A ahead of the rest of the agenda. Mr. Stewart.
We have Ms. Achiki will make the brief staff report to the City Council on this item. And it is the third public hearing for the establishment of the new districts after the tenure. And the official title is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive federal census data from the consultant input and from the community regarding the redrawning of election district boundaries. And as you said, the hearing must start now.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the third of four required public hearings for the current redistricting process. The California Elections Code requires that every 10 years, cities with bi-district election systems use new census data to review and if needed redraw district lines to reflect how local populations have changed. This process ensures that all districts have nearly equal population. The redistricting process for the city of Bellflower must be completed by April 17, 2022. This evening, we have our two consultants in attendance, Tripeppy Smith and Associates, our outreach consultant, and National Demographics NDC, our demography consultant. We are nearing the end of the redistricting process and both consultants will be presenting final reports to you this evening. Allison Torres with Tripeppy Smith will present an overview of our extensive outreach efforts, followed by Doug Johnson, President of NDC, who will present the final analysis of the 2020 census data for the city of Bellflower and lead us into discussion of the next steps in this process. Allison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Myra. Let me share my screen. Okay. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Allison Torres, a junior business analyst with Tripeppy Smith, the public affairs and marketing firm partnering with the city and NDC on the city's redistricting efforts. I want to thank you today for the space to talk about the outreach and engagement efforts that the city has done and the city will continue to do during the duration of this process. On this slide, you can see the outline of what I will be covering tonight, which is essentially just the outreach and engagement efforts that the city and Tripeppy Smith have done to date and the outreach and engagement efforts we plan to do moving forward. The redistricting effort was started because of the census data, which was, or the census that was taken in 2020. Normally, the census data would be given on April of the following year, which would have been April 2021 of this year. However, due to the impacts of the coronavirus, the data was delayed and the data for redistricting and for mapping tools was actually released on September of 2021. With this impacted timeline, the city needed speedy and clear communications in order to notify the public of the mapping tools and all of the necessary information that was needed for the redistricting process. Before I get into the outreach and engagement efforts that the city have done, I want to talk about the overall approach that the city has taken. The city of Bellflower partnered with Tripeppy Smith and National Demographics Corporation in order to get the redistricting effort done in a timely manner. We have met bi-weekly since April of 2021, when Bellflower launched their redistricting effort, for bi-weekly calls that are dedicated to the redistricting effort of Bellflower. We have utilized a multitude of outreach channels, which I will get into later in the presentation, and multiple languages in order to get the most participation possible. Here is an outline of the outreach channels that Tripeppy Smith and the city have used in order to outreach to the public, which has included a dedicated redistricting website, social media, which was posted once a week, including two boosted posts that were targeting the entire city, emails that were sent to those that signed up for redistricting, email notifications, and those that signed up for a city council meeting agenda distribution, as well as an electronic newsletter, which is the example that you see on the screen here, as well as press releases that were sent to digital and print traditional media outlets, a Bellflower, a billboard that was placed on Bellflower Boulevard, and a bilingual Parks and Recreation brochure ad that was placed in the Fall Recreation Newsletter, as well as outreach calls that were called to 30, about 30, community groups within the city of Bellflower and the surrounding area. As mentioned before, the city of Bellflower does have a dedicated redistricting website, which is drawbellflower.org. It was launched at the very beginning of the process in April of 2021 and is continually updated with information and resources. Before every hearing, before every meeting, we update the website to the scheduled page with the meeting agenda and ways to get involved in this hearing. As you can see on the screenshot, there is a way to select your language in order to change the entire content of the website to the language that one so desires. The languages are available in dozens of languages. There is even ways for the community to get involved and submit their feedback, such as on the Community of Interest worksheet and the contact tab. Since the beginning of the website, since the beginning of the launch, there have been roughly 652 people and 652 sessions, which means that 652 people have uniquely engaged in the website for a duration longer than three seconds, which means they have clicked through the tabs or they have read the home screen. Social media content was developed and shared one time a week since April of 2021, as well as two boosted posts that were sent out targeting the city specific to Bellflower. The boosted posts, one of which you can see here on the screen, both of the boosted posts combined reached roughly 5,000 people within the city. A billboard was also utilized on Bellflower Boulevard, which highlighted a high overview of what redistricting was. This was to ensure that thousands of people that drove by on Bellflower Boulevard was aware of and did see what the city is doing for their redistricting efforts. Utilizing yet another mode of communications, Tripeppy Smith did create an informational video about high-level redistricting, which was played at the city's drive-in movie theater, the cable news channel, and available on drawbellflower.org, as well as the city's YouTube page. The last item here I would like to highlight is the bilingual Fall Parks and Recreation ad that was mailed to nearly every household within the city. And moving forward, everything that we did just discuss, from the website updates to social media, to making outreach calls, to utilizing different areas within the city, we will continue to do so throughout the duration of the process before the fourth public hearing and before the deadline to adopt maps. And with that, that was the high-level overview, but I would like to open it up to any questions that you may have. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on this important redistricting effort.
So, Council, have you any questions of the presentation just made?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Okay, go right ahead.
Or did I?
Nope, you're good.
Hi, good evening. And I'm sorry, was it Allison?
Correct, yes.
Hi, Allison. I just have a quick question regarding the boosted post. I believe you mentioned two-word conducted, right?
Correct.
Citywide. Can you kind of give us a little breakdown on the reach that it had and the hits?
Yeah, definitely. So each boosted post reached about 2,700 people. So adding that up, it's about 5,000 people. And the engagements were about 100 each. So we did get a substantial amount of engagement considering that it was about $100 pushed towards each boosted post, which is a pretty substantial amount of people to engage with and reach for the amount that was pushed towards it.
What was the, sorry, what was the timeframe on that boost?
I believe there were seven days. So each post was boosted for seven days.
Very good. Thank you for that. That's good information. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Santenaz, any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you so much. Allison, thank you so much for your presentation. I just have a follow-up question in that, based on your other experience in other cities doing similar tasks for redistricting, is the amount of the number of engagement that you realize in the city kind of comparable to other cities?
Yeah, so every city is different. I would say Bellflower, the amount of outreach that we did with the amount of response that we did is relatively normal. Redistricting is a complicated topic and considering that most of the people within Bellflower did engage, such as on social media or such as via the website, that is relatively normal and that is expected.
Okay. And one more thing. Based on all the medium of contacts that you tried to use to do an outreach for our residents, do you feel that we met all the legal requirements in terms of this different medium of communication?
Yes, I would definitely say we meet the legal requirements. Tripeppy Smith and city staff went above and beyond, such as with the billboard, such as with conducting those outreach calls and creating a detailed log of those calls. So legally, I believe the outreach components are the website and having those translation services provided, as well as having social media and different ways of outreach. But city staff and Tripeppy Smith, I believe we can confidently say we've done above and beyond what is legally required.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, Allison, again, thank you for your work on this. Actually, Councilman Santenaz asked my first question, so that's good. The second was, since now you've been running this, are you seeing something that may be working better so that maybe you step up on that and maybe get more engagement and back off on maybe some of the other things that aren't maybe drawing any engagement? Are you pivoting to make any adjustments?
Yeah, so moving forward, from my understanding, the social media has been one of the biggest pushers for outreach and engagement. So moving forward, we're going to continue to utilize those boosted posts since they did have a substantial return on investment there. So with that, we are going to continue utilizing the electronic newsletter because that is an easy way in order to get the information out. But one of the ways that we're going to continue to push out information is definitely through social media.
All right, very good. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Anyone else?
I'm not seeing anyone move while you open the public hearing.
I'm sorry. We do have one more presentation from our demographer before we...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have one more question for Allison.
Go right ahead.
Allison, again, sorry, I didn't mean to start off, but thank you for the presentation, obviously. And then one follow-up question. Was there any text messaging conducted in this form of canvassing or information sharing?
Text messaging was not utilized. We did utilize phone calls and direct emailing. So as well as like those email blasts, we did email specific people and call specific people and organizations.
Very good, thank you. Is there, if I may ask, a follow-up to that? Is there a legal reason for not using text messaging? I believe usually those are like about one cent per message?
Yeah, there wasn't any specific reason we did not utilize text messaging. However, we do find it easier to get on the phone with someone. So for example, if someone does have large redistricting questions or would like to know how to participate, it's easier to just jump on a five-minute phone call with someone than to have like a stream of 50 text messages going back and forth.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Makes sense. Thank you very much for sharing that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Allison, for the presentation.
All right, so we'll continue with our staff report.
Yes, Doug, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. So I'm Doug Johnson for National Demographics, your demographic consulting firm, and it's a pleasure to be back with you again. I'm going to jump right in here. Some of the introduction to these slides you've seen at the earlier hearings, I'm going to go briefly through them and then I'll focus more on what's the new information in here. So as the messaging has gone out to the city explaining, redistricting does happen every 10 years. Following the census, we need to adjust the lines if they're not in population balance or if there are any other issues. We also have the new Fair Maps Act, which wasn't in place when the city went to district elections and imposed new rules about public education and outreach. And that's all been addressed, as was just discussed. The Fair Maps Act also set a new deadline, which is for this process to be completed by April 17 in order to be finished in time for the November 2022 election. We've covered these rules at each of the earlier hearings and in the outreach materials, so briefly touch on them. On the left, we have the federal laws that are requirements. So we have to have an equal population in each district. The districts need to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And we have to be careful not to let race be the predominant factor because that becomes racial gary mandarin. The new rules from the Fair Maps Act are in the middle. They're from the state of California and these are in priority order. So the districts have to be contiguous. They have to, to the extent practical, avoid dividing neighborhoods and communities of interest. Try to follow easily identifiable boundaries and then try to be compact. And California law does now formally prohibit, what was our practice last time around as well, of not discriminating for or against any political party. And so those two are the sets of statutes and requirements. Once all of those are met, then you can also look at traditional registering principles, which are listed here. You can see respect voters' wishes by trying to avoid head-to-head contests. We can consider future population growth. And the one that comes in now for redistricting that wasn't a factor in redistricting is now that people have been voting in every four-year cycle, we can try to minimize the number of voters switched who were from one cycle to the other. So if someone's voting, expecting to vote in 2022, want to minimize the number of those folks that might get bumped into a 2024 district. You can see on the left, the existing council district map, fairly nice and compact, you know, each one-fifth of the city broken up into a district. And then on the right is the Latino C-VAP or Citizen Voting Age Population. C-VAP data is what the courts focus on because it's considered one of the best measures of the eligible voter population. So what share of the eligible voters are Latino? You can see you get a concentration of that, especially in the north and in the west, but there's really Latino population in all parts of the city. So those are all slides you've seen before at the earlier hearings. This one is the brand-new one. So this is our official redistricting data. It finally came out from the state of California, well, first in the Census Bureau, then was adjusted by the state of California and released in final form on September 27. And the key thing to see here is the top line of total population. And then you get that total number just under 80,000. And then the deviation from ideal, that's if you take that 79,561 and divide it by five, how far off from that target is each district? And what we found is that the districts have grown at largely the same rate over the last 10 years. So they are all within, the largest is 2.29% overpopulated, over that target number, and the smallest is just 2.55%. And that, the difference between those two numbers gives us our planned deviation of 4.84 that's shown on the right. That's a 4.84% is the difference between the largest and smallest. Now, the requirement is that you be within 10%. So the city's current map is well within that 10% limit. So that does mean that the current districts are an option to keep as they are. So they do, they definitely comply with the equal population requirement. We believe they comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and avoid racial gary mandarin. And they're quite good on the Fair Maps Act provisions as well. So having checked all those boxes, if the council wishes, you may keep the same districts. And part of the reason for the hearing tonight is to hear from the community, their opinion primarily on those Fair Maps Act criteria and whether the current districts comply with those. So I mentioned that the Fair Maps Act talks a lot about neighborhoods. This is a series of questions that we have gone through at the earlier hearings. So we're really just asking folks, what is your neighborhood? What are its geographic boundaries? Because when we're talking about maps, we need to know the geographic boundaries. And what ties it together? And you can use city records and the knowledge of locals in identifying those if you don't get public testimony on those fronts and you are looking to redraw your lines. And you can use that kind of information to decide where to redraw them. Communities of interest also we're trying to preserve. These are more areas, not necessarily a traditional neighborhood, although there's a lot of overlap between the two. This is more a geographic area where there are people who have a shared issue, city issue, or a shared social, economic interest or characteristic. So people can kind of tell their story, what ties them together. And then the key thing from law's perspective is that area that is tied together, does it benefit from being in one district? Or would it actually benefit from having multiple representatives? In which case, it would not fall under that community of interest definition under the law. And there have been map drawing tools available for residents who do want to propose alternative maps. There's been a variety of maps that have been, and options that are available on the website and have been highly publicized through the outreach effort. What's next? We're looking at, again, any input from communities or neighborhoods that feel that the current districts are problematic for their lines and/or if they want to see a change, what kind of change you would like to see? And then feedback from the council on whether you are interested in seeing draft maps or pending the outcome of the next hearing, any decision to keep the current lines. So that's a quick spin through all this. Obviously, the big news is, the big new information is the demographics according to the official census data. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Councilmembers, any questions? Doug? Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, again, first off, thank you again for your work on this. Doug, from that last table that gives us our final number, so to speak, I see a 770 total. Is there any, well, again, first off, it does meet the threshold, you know, that 5% plus or minus. So it's there already. But is there any value to try to make each district as close as possible? So like, you know, 770, so divide by five is 154. So, or is that just, is that doing some overly fine-tuning which may really cause some more disruptions of streets and so on? Again, I don't know if there's that value to go that far with it. Right now, it fits the mold, so to speak, and it works. So just any thoughts on that, Doug? Thank you.
Yeah, so your instinct about the second part of that, I think, is correct, which is any kind of fine-tuning where we're talking about moving 100 people or 150 people here or there, you're going to be crossing those major roads. And your map, current map, is pretty good about following major roads and respecting neighborhoods. So if you're going to make any tiny little shifts like that, you're going to move people. The second part of the answer is, is that keep in mind, this data is already, what, 16 months old? And so when you're talking about fine-tuning, you know, 2% versus 4%, well, it's probably already seen change. You know, the numbers are already shifting around as people move around just naturally. So I think you will, if you were close to 10%, then yes, there might be some value to getting it closer to balance. But you're less than half of the allowed margin, so I think you're just fine as it is. And any fine-tuning you try to do would probably have a negative effect on following neighborhood lines and major roads.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment because I think we need to kind of talk, discuss about this before we open the public hearing. Am I correct?
Yes, that's right.
Because we are expected to give directions to staff before we open the public hearing. So I'd like to give my comments right now because in looking at the numbers and being part of the first redistricting process, there is no perfect number per district. There's no such thing. Because to do that, we will disrupt what the demographers called the natural boundaries in the city. So we might be cutting the district by streets, by alley and things like that. So if you look back, that's why I asked the city clerk to provide us with the district numbers when we adopted the first district plan. If you look at that plan back then, way back when Mr. Johnson did this first, the total deviation back then was 501. And the deviation this time is 770. So if you look at, if you compare the two census data, overall, the population, as Mr. Johnson alluded earlier, there was not a significant shift in terms of the total population of the city in terms of how it was divided by district. So my point here is, from 3.27 total deviation in the first district plan, and now it's 4.84, I think the deviation, the increase in deviation did not go too high. It's only 1.5%, so to speak. So I'm not the betting person, but I would, the way I think our population is shifting, I don't even think that the 2030 census will even shift that much. Maybe 2040, possibly. Because if you follow this trend, basically, it's probably grow 3%, 4%. So we're still going to be within the 10% allowed by law. And that's my point because I think to redraw the map now at this point, I think one is there's going to be costs involved. At the same time, my point is, we just adopted this redistricting plan years ago and we're just getting used to it. To change it now, I think, will be disruptive in terms of our residents changing it now. And we only tested it for less than one cycle. So I would, I would kind of push at this point to keep the same district at this point because there's no single district that is really underpopulated and all populated. Otherwise, Mr. Johnson would say, you know what? We need to change the district. We need to change the district boundaries. And at the same time, I would kind of mention that the, the feedback, I think that we received, one of the written feedback is not about districting, it's going back to at-large elections. So, so I, I think our residents are kind of, based on, based on the response we received so far, I, I think our residents are kind of pleased with the way that the city is dividing the districts. And I have not heard any other comment about this. And I believe it up to the others to, to comment on this. So for now, if, if the opportunity comes about later on, I, I would, I would suggest to give direction to staff to re, to basically readapt the current district boundaries. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sanzinez. Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I, first off, would start off with a couple of questions for Mr. Johnson. One, Mr. Johnson, thank you for the report. Just a quick question on, on some of the numbers here. And, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask you anyways, either way. On your census 2020 adjusted, you've got, on the 2020 total pop, for example, you have 97% total doubt. That, that 3% difference is, where, where is that? Is that others? What, what would be categorized under that 3%?
You're exactly right. It'd be Native Americans, multiracial responses, and people that just mark other.
They just left it blank?
There's actually an, an option for, to mark other and then write it.
Perfect. And then with regards to like the voter registration on November 2020, in the, in those sections there, I'm totaling 147. How should I be reading this?
Right. So there are two numbers in there for the Latino population. One is Latino and the other is Spanish surname. And so you'd include one or the other. Don't, don't add those two together. So the state generates a Spanish surname number, and so we report that. The Census Bureau has studied the state census, the state's surname list and found that in California, that surname list undercounts Latinos by about 11%. So we, so we give you the estimate of what we, we estimate the more precise number would be. But you would use either the Latino or the Spanish surname number, not both of them.
Okay, very good. Okay, and then, so that's, that makes more sense. Okay, very good. I just was making sure here how to read this a little bit better. So thank you, thank you for that clarification, that point of clarification. And then the second item I have, Mr. Mayor, I definitely, I would follow up with Councilmember Sunny Santaniz. I wasn't here for the first redistricting or the districting process that occurred as a council member, but I definitely was on the side of the audience side and I was very attentive to it. And I think I definitely concur with Councilmember Santaniz. It's, it's relatively new. Most people, when I canvassed during my last, during the, during the last election, weren't aware of districts. I think that it's, it's a new concept and they're just getting adjusted. And I think to, to Councilmember Sunny Santaniz's point, the expense of it, you know, is unnecessary as well at this point in time. I think that we've got a good district. The deviation is, is minimal. So I just, I concur with that, with what the council member has stated prior. So I just want to share my thoughts as well. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Mayor Tim Ray Dutton, do you concur what's being said here? What do you think?
Oh, yeah. As we saw in the presentation, the districts have met all the guidelines. The existing districts, the ones that were drawn up last go around, have met all the guidelines within the threshold as needed. And, and as it was spoken, is, it's divided up by the major roads mainly. And, and it's, it's still perfect like it was before. And, and just to follow up on what Councilmember Santaniz said is, you know, these are working and they, and they meet the guidelines and they, and they should continue.
All right. Mr. Hamada, would you like to voice your opinion as to what's been said before?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, my question to, to Mr. Johnson was, you know, to confirm, again, my thoughts. And again, yes, I concur with, again, some of the, again, comments of my colleagues in regards to, there's been very little change, so to speak. And, and, and it fits the standards that are provided to us. I think it's working now. So with no major deviation, I, I think it, I think it should just continue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I believe the same thing. I think equal representation continues to be the, our main criteria for this. And we've looked at it, we've studied it. And what we did five years ago, or seven years ago, whatever it was, still holds today. And I know what is true about what Mr. Sanchez said when he goes door to door campaigning. People didn't even realize that he was running for a district in their area. So there's still a lot of growth and education needs to be done in this. I certainly don't want it to start changing in the middle of midstream here if we can keep from it. But let's now open the public hearing. Do I have a motion for such?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification.
Yes.
Based on the, the notes from the city clerk here, we need to provide them direction. Is that clear enough? Direction?
Don't we need public hearing at some point?
Yeah, that I was rereading it, so.
How would you like this to respond?
I want to make sure that-
I did hear a consensus. Mr. City Attorney, is that sufficient to move forward with the public hearing?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion for, to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Sunny Sanzinez, seconded by Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. Madam City Clerk, let's see if anybody would like to give us some testimony at this time.
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. So we can move to-
Move and close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, followed by support by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need formal action on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council has given its input, provided direction. There is one last public hearing and we'll bring back action items for that one.
All right, so that part of our agenda is completed.
Just want to clarify, Mr. Mayor, in the next public hearing, will that include a resolution adopting, readapting the, the current district boundaries?
Correct, it'll be in ordinance, but yes.
Ordinance, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so we're going to go back to our council announcements. We're going to resume the rest of our agenda for this evening. A citywide mailer was sent out to all residential and business addresses throughout the city of Bellflower on Saturday, October 2nd, 2021. The mailer group provides information regarding three available grants for individuals and businesses in the city that were negatively affected by the COVID pandemic. For more information, please contact the Economic Development Department at 562-804-1424, extension 2010, or visit the city's website at www.bellflower.org. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, your report, please.
Thank you. The city of Bellflower invites you to participate in the Bellflower Honors Program. This program offers an opportunity to honor past and present military personnel from Bellflower by dedicating a street pole that hangs a banner. The banners will go up November, in November, and stay up for one year and then be given to the honorary after that or his family as a thank you for their service. The deadline to order a banner is Friday, October 15th. For more information, please contact Mike Machado at 562-804-1424, extension 2258, or go ahead and email him at M as in Mary, machado@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's see. The state of California's COVID-19 rent relief program is still available for California renters and their landlords who have been impacted by COVID-19. This program covers 100% of rental and utility arrears payments and, let's see, prospective rent to qualified households. For more information, please visit the state's website. Let's see, housingiski.com or call Housing is Key COVID-19 Assistance, Assistance Line at 1-833-422-4255. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is currently undergoing our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state, country, and city level. Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in the process. Tonight, we hosted our third public hearing of the four hearings that are required. For more information or to provide input for the final hearing, you can visit our redistricting website at drawbellflower.org, email or email redistricting@bellflower.org, or contact the city clerk's office at 562-804-1424, extension 2222. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 28th, 2021, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors adopted the Los Angeles County COVID-19 Tenant Protections Resolution, which extended certain protections previously in effect under the county's eviction moratorium. This updated moratorium will extend non-payment of rent protections to commercial tenants and extends limited protection to residential tenants. For detailed information about the LA County COVID-19 Tenant Protections Resolution, please call 1-800-593-8222 or visit the county's website at dcbalacounty.gov/noevictions. That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanzinez. At this time, we're going to proclaim October 2021 National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation I'll read from. "October 2021 marks 36 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer, detecting, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and whereas when breast cancer is detected early and is in a localized state, the five-year survival rate for women is 99%. Whereas the awareness campaign is remembering those who have lost their fight against breast cancer, standing with those who remember their loved ones, and continue to support our nation's advocates. And whereas the American Cancer Society has searched endlessly for a cure through vital research and has the mammoth task of educating our community and all our Americans of the risk of breast cancer, therefore, I Dan Coops, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Bellflower." Proclamation signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. So we have this proclamation. I'll present it to the appropriate party. And this month of October will be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Also, I have something here that I want to present. And Sunny, listen attentively here, this National Filipino-American History Month. And whereas the Filipino-American community is the second largest of Asian-American group in the United States, with a population estimated at 4 million people. And whereas Filipinos first reached North America in the 16th century and the first Filipino settlements on the continents were established in 1763, we recognize that many contributions Filipinos have made as a partner of the United States, including fighting wars alongside Americans and playing a role in the American labor movement. And whereas the Celebration of Filipino-American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to promote the study of Filipino-American history, culture, and their significant contributions in the area of art, society, politics, economics, education, technology, religion, and so much more, now therefore, I Dan Coops, the mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Filipino-American History Month. And we have the proclamation here, signed by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, also by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and of course, our favorite Filipino gentleman, American, Sunny Sanzinez. Sunny, I'm going to present this to you, representing all of the 4 million people in the United States as their representative. Please come forward.
All right.
You got something you want to say? Now's the time to say it.
Mayor, this is very timely because on Saturday, I'll be meeting with the consul general of the Philippines. So I'll be making the presentation.
There we go. I had no idea.
Perfect.
Perfect. All right, well, Bellflower is right on beam here.
Yes.
Making, we're sure we support the right people in the right month, you know?
Yeah, and also I'll add that out of those 4 million, 2 million are in Bellflower.
No wonder why you do so well in the election. All right, Mr. Public Comments, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the more button at the bottom right corner. Or if by telephone, press star six to raise your hand and star, no, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You'll be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Do we have any comments at this time, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item 13A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action regarding resolution number 21-59, a resolution city council, city of Bellflower approving the format, authorizing the execution and delivery of a preliminary official statement of bond purchase agreement and continuing disclosure agreement in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of pension obligation bonds and other matters related thereto. And I believe Mr. Ria is going to make our staff report for us tonight.
Good morning, good evening, Mr. Stewart. I'm actually the one who's going to make the presentation. My name is, my name is Anna Garin. I'm the finance manager. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's presentation is to consider adopting resolution number 21-59 to approve the preliminary official statement, bond purchase agreement, and continuing disclosure agreement required for the city to sell the pension obligation bonds. To provide a background, on March 22nd, the city council adopted two resolutions to authorize the pension obligation bonds and to establish a pension stabilization trust fund. Shortly after the approval, the bond council filed the required validation action with the Los Angeles County Superior Court. The validation action was not challenged, and as a result, on August 26th, a default judgment was entered. On September 26th, the 30-day validation appeal period ended. Credit rating is one of the most important tools investors use when purchasing municipal bonds. As a result, on September 29th, staff and the finance team made a presentation to S&amp;P Global Ratings to obtain a credit rating to issue POBs at the lowest interest rates possible. The rating agency assesses the city's overall past and current financial condition, debt level, city's demographics, and other factors. They also look at the recent and future economic development projects in the city and evaluate city policies so that a forward-looking opinion can be expressed about the city's ability to meet its debt repayment obligations in full and on time. Ratings are expressed as letter grades. AAA is the highest rating, while D is the lowest. Ratings from AA to CCC may be modified- Ratings from AA to CCC may be modified by the addition of a plus or minus sign to show its relative standing within the major rating categories. This concept is very similar to one's credit score. Most of the public agencies recently received ratings in the range of A+ through AA. The city received a AA-minus credit rating. In determining the city's UAL payoff amount, our designated CalPERS actuary provided a range of $15.3 million and $10 million and communicated that the actual payoff will be somewhere between these two amounts. The reason for the range is because some of the unique situations, including the pending implementation of the investment rate of return of 21.3% for fiscal year 2021, lowering of the discount rate from 7% to 6.8%, and other actuarial assumptions that will be considered by the CalPERS Board in November of this year. We propose paying off CalPERS at the midpoint, which is $12.6 million. This would mean issuing $13 million in Pobs and an estimated 2.99% all-in true interest cost. Our gross savings will be nearly $5 million, and the net present value savings will be $3.8 million. Refinancing the city's current UAL with Pobs will provide estimated annual savings as shown in this slide. These annual savings plus $500,000 per year will be deposited into a Section 115 trust that the city can use to pay for future pension obligations. The wider the spread between the bond interest rate and the CalPERS discount rate, the more savings the Pobs will generate, making this financing that much more effective. As shown, the current spread is the difference between 2.99% bond interest cost and 6.8% discount rate. The difference is 3.81%. Under the CalPERS Funding Risk Mitigation Policy adopted in 2015, the discount rate will be lowered in years when CalPERS realizes high investment returns. The table at the bottom shows that when the actual investment returns exceed the discount rate by 2 to 17%, the discount rate will be reduced by 0.05% to 0.25%. Even with this policy in place, we still feel that the Pobs financing is effective due to the historic low bond interest rates. What are the next steps in the process? Staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution approving the form of preliminary official statements, the marketing document for the Pobs, the continuing disclosure agreement under which the city will file annual reports for investors, and notice of certain enumerated events, and a bond purchase agreement under which the city will agree to sell Pobs to Raymond Jameson Associates, Inc., as the underwriter selected to deliver such bonds to investors pursuant to the authorizing resolution. Or alternatively, discuss and take actions related to these items. If the resolution is approved tonight, the pension obligation bonds may be marketed and sold in the next few weeks with the estimated pricing date of October 19, 2021. This date is when the interest rate will be locked. The transaction is estimated to be closed on November 4. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The Finance Team is also in attendance to help with any questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Let's see if you have any questions of our council. Mr. Hamada, any questions you'd like to ask?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Anna, for the work on this, and obviously Tay and the team. Maybe just for the record on the, there was a slide that showed the 2021 Pension Obligation Bonds, the payoff, and it stretched over from 2026 to 2043. There's that period between 2038 and 2040 where there are no savings. So is that where all the costs are bundled into?
So the current UAL payments, if you look at the graph, it's not leveled.
Yeah.
It's more of, it goes from low to high and then drops down. So with issuing the Pobs, it will level the UAL payments. That's why.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Okay, just so, that's mentioned. But again, I want to congratulate the team for looking into this strategy that definitely results in savings and then eventually to, you know, take care of this PERS issue. So again, it's great work. Looks like there's some great timing and looks like, you know, things are going to be very positive, at least in this community when it comes to dealing with our pension obligations. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Ray Dutton, any questions?
No questions, just a statement. Great job, good report. That's all.
All right. Mr. Sanz Yanez, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Garan, thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you and Tay and the Finance Team for working on this great project. A savings of, you know, $4 million for the city is, it's a big deal as far as I'm concerned. That's a lot of money that we can use somewhere else. Just for clarification, you mentioned that in terms of timing, the bonds will be marketed in the week of October 19. Is that correct?
That's the interest lock date.
Interest lock date, okay. So given the, and you mentioned about the rating of AA-minus. What is your, what is your projection in terms of the interest rate? Will the projected interest rate that you used here in the chart of 2.8%, would that be affected by that credit rating?
The credit rating that was used to project the savings is a AA-minus.
Okay, so perfect, wow. So you had the crystal ball back then, huh?
The Finance Team does.
Okay, and I just want to make a comment about the Funding Risk Mitigation Policy because I think CalPERS is in this dilemma, so to speak, which basically was passed on to the cities. Charging 7% interest rate for the cities is just, to me, is unconscionable. And if you look back in terms of the policy of CalPERS, when the stock market was doing well back then, they told the cities, don't contribute because the pension fund was well-funded. As far as I'm concerned, there's no such thing as a pension is well-funded because at some point in time, as you know, the stock, the stock market, the bond market, it's cyclical, it can go up, it can go down. And so the cities are suffering right now because of that position that CalPERS took years ago. And I'm glad to know that Bellflower is not the only city doing the pension obligation bonds. A number of cities are doing the same thing. So I think the CalPERS will be getting the message, they'll be getting an influx of money being returned to them by cities. So hopefully they've learned a lesson out of that predicament that was being passed on to us. So again, thank you, thank you and your team for doing this marvelous job on behalf of our residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sanz Yanez. Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Anna, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Very informative, and I just want to commend the staff for embarking on this project and for the fiscal responsibility that's being undertaken here. It's like Councilmember Sunny Sanz Yanez has just mentioned, it was definitely, it's a definitely right move to be able to save $5 million in projected amount. That's this tremendous effort. Also, the rating that you guys are, that we're receiving, AA-minus, that's a good rating to have. The, my one question, and has to do with the interest rate. How much has it changed since we began this process? Are we, are we within the ballpark of where we started, and do we project to close at this 2.8? Because I know it's not locked in yet.
Can I defer that question to Ose or Tammy?
I'm happy to take it. Dear Councilmen, we started this process quite a long time ago, and for the better part of the last eight months, the interest rates were moving in your favor. And so when you approved moving forward with the validation process to the beginning of August, you probably were saving close to 35 to 40 basis points because the rates were going down the right way. You've lost about 20 to 25 basis points since mid-August, and right now, the market is fairly stable. So the plan is to, if you approve this, we would be posting the POS later this week, placing us in a good position to market the bonds and lock in the rates, hopefully in a stable market next week.
Very good, so time is of the essence here.
Yes.
Very good. All right, thank you, thank you for sharing that. And again, just a great job on all staff and just really proud of our city right now. That'll conclude my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. You know, it's, we've worked hard to try to find places throughout the city in our bonds and our investments. Sunny and I sat on a committee that made sure we could re-figure all our lighting in the City of Bellflower, and the savings with the electricity was enough to cover all new fixtures. And we've looked at other debts that we've had that we refinanced and saved, again, not as much as $5 million, but we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so this council continues to be very prudent with city funds, and we're trying to reinvent ourselves as a more aggressive city with money coming in that we're not spending on bad investments that the PERS obviously was a part of. So we'll try to redeem ourselves with this October 19. Hopefully, the market stays strong and stable, and I'm glad to be a part of what we're talking about. So at this time, would we like to open up the public comments?
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Wait a minute, where I'm, City Clerk, is public comments going to be on right away?
We can see if anyone in the audience would like to speak.
This isn't a public hearing, just a consideration.
I'm not seeing any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So how do you want to handle this? Should we offer a motion in a second and go through a voting process on this?
Yeah, you're looking to adopt Resolution 21-59.
All right, anybody want to make a motion for such?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, go ahead.
It's one of those can't-miss deals, right?
Oh yeah, of course, that's why.
We're so anxious.
Pretty safe.
Be happy to make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-59.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we got a motion by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanz Yanez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanz Yanez?
Aye.
Mayor Brotem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Moving right along through the consent calendar. Anybody have any refusals or conflicts, or does anybody have an item they'd like to poll for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 14F, just for a very brief comment.
14-F? 14-Frank.
Yep.
All right, anybody else have, I assume there's no one has any kind of conflicts, but now's the chance if you want to poll something to discuss. All right, Sunny, you have the floor on 14-F.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to address this item on the agenda. We're basically waiving some rent for stand-up comedy, and I just want to assure Mr. Garis, the operator, that when we got into this agreement with the operator, we saw the value of this establishment. It's something unique for the area, so I just want to assure the operator that we're also invested in this venture. That's why I'm really glad that we're able to assist in terms of waiving a part of the rent on a monthly basis, and I like the way it was structured. It was for three or four months, and then with the possibility upon approval by the city manager to extend that to another six months. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sanz Yanez. There's a motion to approve the actions on the consent calendar.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Sunny Sanz Yanez, supported by Mayor Brotem Ray Dutton. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanz Yanez?
Aye.
Mayor Brotem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports, let's start with Councilmember Hamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start off with the best thing here. You know, we had talked earlier about, you know, population in Bellflower and demographics, and I'm proud to announce Bellflower has just gained one resident. My daughter, or our daughter.
Our daughter, yeah.
Gay birth to a little princess. So let's see, Emma Leiko Coleman was born on Saturday, just short of seven pounds, just short of 19 inches. So healthy and ready to rock and roll and dress up and do all the other princess duties. So we are just, we're kind of ecstatic and, you know, again, we're just thrilled that we added 50% increase of grandkids, so. So that's, that's the big thing. You know, the rest of the stuff, okay. Last September 30 and the 1st, I attended the SCAG Mobility One event. Again, it's a SoCal transportation gathering. It was virtual, and again, quite a bit of people gathered to discuss transportation issues, and they talked about the recovery efforts that are being made, and again, all the impacts and then, you know, solutions. So there's a, there was a lot of dialogue, but again, there's strategies to be implemented and hopefully here in the future, you know, transportation issues will be addressed thoroughly and we can get either, you know, people moving, goods moved, and so on. So on the 7th, I was able to deal with also the SCAG Transportation Committee and also the Regional Council. And the one biggie, and again, this was after the State of the City. I left the State of the City after it finished, got on the RC meeting, and they were still on item one, and I was, and I was one hour late, so. And it ended up, the meeting ended in about three hours. So the big issue was the SoCal Green Print Tool. And again, this is something they've been worked on, being worked on for about a year now, and it's a web-based mapping tool, which again gathers a lot of data. It's existing, something's being planned, and it's all available now. But there were some agencies in various areas of Southern California that were concerned that, again, you know, dated material is going to affect, you know, future planning and future development. So there were some stakeholders that raised the issue. SCAG was willing to pause the work on it and again gather up the groups and discuss it further, so, and that's how it ended, but it took three hours to do that, so. But it was, everybody was, after we voted, it, I mean, again, to the majority, people supported the pause. There were some that were pretty much wanted to just totally end it for now, again, over a period of time, and basically start over after like, you know, 18 months of work. So it's something that, again, we were glad to have some discussion, and again, I think it was the right thing to do to just hold off for a few, and let's reorganize, and let's get the people back on to discussion, so. And I'll leave it at that. But again, it was a great week for the city. But again, it was a great week for the city, of course, and I'll let the mayor cover that one. And great to be in Bellflower now. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada, and congratulations on your new granddaughter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to just kind of acknowledge and thank Public Works, our Director Len Guraki, and Bernie, and all the staff on the Public Works team, just for all their efforts towards our traffic calming efforts in our city, across the city. I've seen a lot of great improvement, have heard a lot of great compliments towards the measures and the work that the Public Works team is putting into traffic calming. So I just want to give them a kudos there real quick. And then I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem as well, along with our Parks Director PJ and Kristen and all the staff involved in the State of the City. Just great job and just really, again, proud of our city at this point in time and moment. So I just want to say thank you for all your works. That's it, Mr. Mayor. I'll conclude with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sanñanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I attended their morning mingle last September 28th, and I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for continuing to engage with our businesses in the city of Bellflower. And also, I was absent at the State of the City. I stand for reelection for the Executive Committee of the JPIA, which is Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And I'm glad to announce that I was reelected for another two-year term. And a couple of takeaways from that conference. One is the use of social media by elected officials, which is very informative. And what's really enlightening to me is we have few attorneys to discuss about, give some guidelines or suggestions in terms of how the city staff handle depositions, which is kind of unique. So it's very informative. And finally, it was reported that the company that the JPI established, which is based in Utah, it's about 17% of the total business of JPIA, the investments earned of 14% since inception compared to 2% in California. So the investment was well worth it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to Councilmember Hamada and the whole family for this new addition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, Sunny Sanñanes. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton.
I'd also like to congratulate Ray Hamada on his latest addition and new granddaughter. They are wonderful things to have in a family. And then I would like to also congratulate the mayor. Did an excellent job running the State of the City last week and did a wonderful thing. I don't want to take your thunder from it. So that's all I have to say, Mayor.
No, it's when you can give the State of the City, and we've had so many positive things happen during what ordinarily would have been a pretty negative year. But we all pulled together, and we've got some great things coming up. We could report some wonderful additions to our budget and new properties coming online with the guy going to tear down the old Greek market he announced, and we're going to get some building over there. So it's a fun time to be on the council, so we have to enjoy it because it doesn't always go this way. So we have to remember the good times so we don't suffer so much when we have the bad times. But I'm so proud of the city. I'm so proud of our staff. But more importantly, it's an honor and a privilege to serve with you guys here. We all bring the love of Bellflower to our city. We always think, what is best for the city? Not what's best for us. We've had councils where that wasn't always the case, but we're all pulling together to make this city better, and it shows. And other cities recognize that when they don't have the successes that we've had. So again, let's keep the momentum going. Just gave that little report last week to 89 people on the outside venue, and it was a pleasure to do it. And it was nice to be able to have so many positive items to talk about. Tonight, I'm going to adjourn our meeting in honor of a good friend of mine, Jim Muirin. I've got a little biography I want to read about him because this is a true rags-to-riches story that we can all honor. Jim was born here in Martins Creek, North Carolina, in 1939, November 18. He passed away on October 4th, 2021, at the age of 81. Jim was one child of members of seven and lived on land bought by his grandfather for $1,000 in 1945. He worked with the family by cutting and selling and hauling bricks for building the library, digging small trees for the land to plant when they sold. He shined shoes at the barber shop for a dime, and they cooked off a wood-cook stove and a wood heater for hot water. Jim loved reading in school, and he excelled. He graduated in high school on a Tuesday, and he left for US Army on Sunday with $2.35 in his pocket. He worked and trucked across the United States to California, where he liked the weather and opportunities. He worked at Long Beach Department Store, took classes at Sridas College, bought his first home in Long Beach, and he then worked for Frito Lay and became a sales manager and was the top sales manager wherever he worked. He decided he wanted to be self-employed and set his sights high on real estate. And he was hired and mentored by our own Bruce Mulhern at Bellflower Mulhern Realty. And he zoomed to the million-dollar club quickly. He was very successful in real estate and managed Mulhern's Sridas office and went on to get his broker's license. Jim was a member of the Rancho Las Sridas Board of Realtors and director for many years, the National Association of Realtors Emeritus, the Rotary Club of Bellfar for over 25 years. He served on the board as president, vice president, secretary, committee member, and the Paul Harris Fellow. Jim has had married and divorced three times before meeting Sheila Y. Muirin in 1978, marrying in 1982, and they were together until his death, where he was surrounded by all five children, three grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Bellfar Rotary Club has a project honoring Jim's service to his country and community. If anybody is interested, please contact Yana Yu at Prudential California Realty here in Bellflower. Jim will be buried in a private ceremony at Full Military Honors National Cemetery in Miramar. And our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Muirin family. Jim was a special guy, and you may have seen around town a lot of years in a wheelchair. Never lost his sense of humor, always had a story to tell, always had a prank to pull. Just one of the heart and soul members of our Bellfar Rotary. And he's another guy that made Bellflower better, and we're going to miss him. And he was sick quite a while, and finally, he was taken, but he's in a better place. And it was a pleasure to know that man, and I wanted to make sure we dedicated tonight's our regular meeting in memory of Jim Muirin. Our next meeting, the Bellfar City Council is going to be held 5:30 PM on Monday, October 25th, 2021. We're adjourned.